Should be an easy bucket here.
I think Peter just mentioned to me.
Right, because we have tables of eight.
Isn't that amazing?
And I'm with my.
You spent $30 million on one of them.
And no academy person is.
I don't recognize anybody.
So I said, I could send it to Dr. Tinkwell and see if I could get somebody else like. My foot here is okay.
Ready?
I'm ready.
All right. I will call the Monday September 23rd, public hearing on the budget of the Racine Unified School District to order. Let's begin with a roll call.
Mrs. Barbian.
Here.
Mrs. Symbalnik.
Here.
Dr. Frontier.
Here.
Mr. Hanser.
Mr. Heckan-Lively.
Here.
Mrs. Hoover.
Here.
Mrs. McKenna.
Here.
Mr. O'Connell.
Here.
Mr. Weiser.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
We have a quorum. Let us begin the public hearing on the budget with an overview of the proposed budget. Mr. Duff, you're sitting in the hot seat. I assume you're going to present.
Yes, thank you. And I'll try and be a little more concise. If you have any questions, feel free to ask them since the, there aren't as many people in the audience, so I'll try and go through this, but if you ever have a question, feel free to, feel free to ask me. So the budget development process, the budget hearing is something that's required by state law. School district has to hold a public hearing, so this is it. And then this, but we also afford the public opportunities to speak on the budget throughout the development process. So on the top budget timeline, you can see where we're at. We're almost done. Next month, we'll be getting all the final certified levy amounts, state aid amounts, open enrollment voucher, all those other fun things that allow us to finalize the budget. Third Friday count happened, we're just finalizing that. So part of the budget presentation has been changed this year so that I can have it include features that are required by the GFOA best practices in school budgeting. So there's certain requirements of the presentations that we provide to the public and the board. So these are some of the things that are required for meeting the GFOA requirements. So one of them is telling us what are the budget challenges. So a lot of the budget challenges we brought before the board as part of the budget tracking document. Over time, the biggest challenge was the $11 million deficit. So some of the contributing factors to those budget challenges included the declining enrollment factor. Our funding is dependent upon how many students we have. Since 2015, our student enrollment has declined by over 9%. So every year, the state requires us to keep reducing our budget to align with our enrollment. I also initially projected reduced federal funds. That was about $2 million. Operational costs, we thought we were going to have some additional cost increases for, in different areas. Our staffing costs were projected to increase about $1.6 million. We did have pupil technology replacement, curriculum updates, and we also always are striving to meet the academic needs of students. For example, we wanted to continue full implementations of our academies of Racine and our high schools and maintain our instructional supports for improving academic achievement. So these, all these challenges had to occur while meeting a deficit. Some of the responses to that is we worked, we came up a strategy to develop, to move us towards a balanced budget. Some of that was reducing our staff in the district if we have fewer staff. So we decreased enrollment by 9%, but our staff was about the same. So we needed to strategically reduce our staff. We did some targeted reductions of staff at the central office to try and minimize the impact of schools. But we did reduce some staff at the schools based on enrollment declines and things like that. So as we have fewer in students, sometimes you don't need as many staff at schools, so we did some of that. We did also work as a strategy to generate a federal funding carryover, and our goal was to have $1.5 million. We did work to reduce department budgets.
Pardon me, Mark. Was regarding the federal funding, was, were our cuts proportional to the decline enrollment or to?
Which in the federal.
Federal, yeah.
So one of the things that, the federal funding carryover didn't really apply to decline in enrollment. So one of the things is we generated a strategy in the previous year, like the one we just finished, to make sure we had enough carryover funds and federal funds to be able to help with this, this current year budget. So that was a goal of $1.5 million. So it, we were able to do that without impacting our schools, and it was just a kind of a way to, a funding strategy that.
I guess my question goes to the top section in terms of, the second point, reduce state and federal funds. State categoric aids and federal funds were expected to be.
Oh, so as far as the challenges?
Yeah, was our funding from the feds proportional to our student decline or is it?
Uh, that one, that one's, it, some of it's dependent upon the level of free and reduced lunch students we have and the amount of federal allocation of funds that's distributed throughout the state. So like Title II is one of them, but Title I is one that's dependent upon how many free and reduced lunch we have.
I see.
So it's kind of linked.
I see.
And we also get IDEA special education funds. So, so that was kind of in that area. That's where we thought that we would have fewer funds initially. And then instead of having a drop, we said, well, let's try and save enough money not to lose $2 million. We'll in fact have less of reduction to help us with the budget deficit.
Can I ask also, in that, one of our state legislators reminded us we're getting only 6% federal money for special. Did that number change at all?
It's about the same.
Okay, thank you.
And now, so we worked to reduce department budgets. We did close some programs. For example, Goodland Elementary was one that was closed earlier than we initially planned, and then we combined our early learning programs into one building that allowed us to have some efficiencies. And then we did have some staffing cost efficiencies in our benefit area, so those are some that were brought and mentioned to the board. And then we did use referendum funding to help with our student technology purchase. So overall, that helped, and our results were that, it was a little bit different than our goals, but we did reduce our staff. We did, instead of a $6 million savings, about 4.4 million, but we did reduce over 80 FTE with the largest proportion out of central office staff. We did hit our target for federal carryover funding. We did reduce our departmental budgets. We hit our targets of savings for closed programs, and we actually did better on our benefit savings than we expected. And so overall, we, we hit our, overall, and then the student technology costs, we also were able to save more money in that area than we initially projected. And the other good news was that the state action on the budget and the governor's veto did provide us with addition, $3 million of additional state revenue, and we did have the additional federal revenue, some of it due to our strategies that we implemented. And that allowed us to implement a, the full employee CPI compensation adjustment and other changes to the budget that were priorities of the district. So that was, we ended up, everything kind of fell into place, so that's, that's good As part of the, our budgeting process, we always keep in mind all of our district-wide goals and strategies, and we try to focus our budget to meet those strategies. So our, we have, student learning is our, one of, I have our four pillars here, student learning, but our strategies were, we have our updated curriculum in this area. In addition, we, for high quality learning, we're implementing the full implementation of the academies. There's a number of initiatives in these areas that the budget does support. In culture and environment, we also, for behavioral support programs, we're implementing programs, trauma-sensitive schools, and we also PBIS initiatives. So those are some strategies that the budget are focused in the pillars that are implemented in this budget. I just want to mention that suspension means you want to improve our suspensions, not increase suspensions. It's actually means our goal is to reduce suspensions. So the slide, don't misinterpret the slide. And then partnerships in the community, that includes a number of, oh, gotta go to the next slide, improving business partnerships. Some of that is through our academies. We have a number of initiatives with our business partnerships for taking students through our academies program, and also a number of family engagement initiatives. And budget strategies are to implement long-term financial plan, facilities plans, which you'll hear about later today, and our technology plan. So overall, the budget is over $329 million. These are the categories. The most of it is in the general fund, $230 million, with special education coming in second at $53 million. And we have a whole number of other different categories of the funds, debt service, capital projects, and other funds included.
Mark, can you share with us, what percent of that special ed will come from the state and the federal government, roughly?
Um, the state, I don't know, I'd have to get my document. The federal government is, I don't have that report with me right now. I could share that with you later. But the state is about 27%. It's probably about $7 million. Federal government is about, let's see, I'd have to get my report and I can give that to you later.
Okay, yeah, when you get a chance, thank you.
So, we do have, well, here, maybe I can do it in my head. It's about a $34 million general fund contribution to the special education fund. So that's about 11.
29 million.
Twenty-one million dollars or 20-something million dollars of a mixture between state and federal funds.
Thank you.
So. And expenditures by object, this is what we spend it on. Most of it is salaries and benefits. It's about 71.8% of the budget is seven, is salaries and benefits. That's down a little bit. From last year, it was 74.1. And then purchased services went up. Some of that is open enrollment costs. We have a lease. We also have been hiring more, larger numbers of contracted special education staff. So sometimes it's a shift between categories, so it doesn't, so there's always an explanation behind the, the number. And voucher payments is at 8.1%. Last year was 6.7%. So that's part of a cost that's embedded in our budget. So when we say $330 million, well, a big chunk of that, over 20-something million is payments to private schools for, as part of the voucher program.
Mark?
Mm-hmm.
The voucher payments, does that include the amount that the district funds for students in voucher schools who are needing special education services?
We do, there are two different categories of voucher payments. There's private school vouchers for regular education students, and we also have voucher payments. It's about $12,000-something dollars to private schools that have special needs students. So that, that's included in that total, but if we provide the services on our own, that, that's all, that's embedded in our operational program. So sometimes we provide special education staff to go out to the schools to help with IEPs or speech therapy, things like that. So that's on top of the.
So it could even make that graphic a greater amount if we counted our speech therapists, our reading specialists, our physical therapists, all of those.
Right.
That actually serve a school, kids in voucher schools.
That's, yes, it would be. And the next category is the, like, what do we spend it on a functional category? Most of it is in the instructional area. Actually, this area is up, 48.8% up from 42.9. Instructional support is also higher, which, to 12.7% versus 11.8%. And then business and operations is about the same. Administration is slightly up from 4.9 to 5.3. I'm not sure, yeah, how these, some of these categories work out. But vouchers and open enrollment, that is, that's also up as well. So I'm trying to figure out what is down. So I'll have to check on these statistics here. But overall, these are the functional categories of what we spend it on. The bulk is on instruction.
Pardon me, so, did you say administration is up and yet?
Yeah, it, it.
We cut central office.
It was 5.3% versus 4.9. So, so it's, it's a slight fraction of a point up in total functional expenditures. So I'd have to, this is, these are all funds, so, so this includes like food service fund and includes the, the construction funds and things like that. So, so I'd have to, usually in the detailed budget report, I, I kind of do a breakout of some of those, what might.
So just, you could explain why, with the, with the cuts that we said predominantly came with central office, our administration number went up?
It's just the total amount spent, so that.
Okay.
Our, our FTE is down.
Right, and then you had to take into consideration, so even if the number of FTEs went down, the proportion of this budget to that.
Okay, I see, the number, total number went down.
Right. That doesn't mean the FTE is up.
Right.
It's just, when you look at the overall pie.
So, yeah, so I, I can look into that as to what is causing that or whether I made a clerical error on whether it's 4.9 versus 5.3.
Thank you.
Revenue sources is, state sources, it's a little bit higher this year because we did get some additional state sources. It went from 60 to 60.9, and property taxes then went down from 29.5 to 27.9 as a share of the budget. And federal sources also went up from 9.3 to 9.9. So it's kind of like, it's not all that different, but you can see it's a little bit on the edges. One of the areas to report on is our outstanding debt. So one of the things, this is our debt service fund. Our total outstanding debt for the district, this is all the money we borrowed, it will drop by over $10 million from 116 million outstanding debt to 105 million this year. So we are paying down that debt, and so this, the budget reflects that, continuing to work down that, the debt service. Capital projects, we're also spending down the funds in this area, so there's not as, won't be as much available. We'll be spending out, you can see, fund balance at the end of the year will be zero, so we're pretty much spending all of our, all available funds in our capital projects funds. A lot of that is dedicated to the Aquatic Center initiative. We're also to provide a update on all the fund balance areas, so I think you can see the ending balance in the category. It says the ending balance. So our general fund has about a $42.6 million ending balance, which is, which is, meets the 15% fund balance guidelines by the board. The largest category of spend down you can see is in capital projects funds. So you can see in capital projects funds, we intend to spend all of what we have left at this point, which means we won't have as much available for capital projects funds in the future. There'll be a little bit of funding left of referendum funds, a few million a year, but this, we're pretty much spending down all, almost all available capital projects There are times in the past, we've had carryover funds used to pay for projects or furniture or different initiatives. We don't really have that this year because of the budget situation last year, but we do have, we did use a strategy of allocating 1.5 million of federal grant funds to maintain our teaching support staff in our schools. So we, at this, at some point, it's kind of a carryover, but it's a federal carryover, and those funds won't be available in the subsequent year. So it is kind of like a one-time funding, and we're going to have to come up with that, those funds to maintain those in the next budget. Hopefully that makes sense. So this is kind of a historical tax levy comparison, so we can see how it's slowly declined. It kind of gives an indication of what share of the budget goes towards what part of it. I do have, we do have an estimated tax reduction. I have, at this point, estimated about 5%. It could vary based on our final amounts, and it's, boy, I think I have a graphic here, preliminary subject to change. So we're going to keep working to finalize that once we have all of our certified figures and, and others, other items in the budget included. It could go up, could go down, and I always, I'm always reluctant to give an exact figure because somebody will say, well, you said it was going to be this, and then the state changes something and it's completely different, so. Another area is to talk about long-term fiscal sustainability. One of the areas that GFOA would like us to talk to you about is how does this budget help us in the long term? So this is the forecast that provided you in May, showing a very dire budget situation and so that, and then we needed, what reductions we needed to make and how it impacted different things within enrollment declines. And so as part of this budget, you can see how it eliminates the, the budget for 19, budget deficit for 19, 20, and dramatically reduces our structural deficit into the future. So it does, as part of the interim budget. So this does help us significantly with our future budget situation and dealt with a very large budget situation in the current year. We do have a, an anticipated deficit for the 2021 year, but it was significantly less than we expected. So the work that we continue to need to do is we have to find, get our final revenue limit amounts, our voucher levy amounts, our open enrollment amounts, our state aid amounts. All of that comes mid-October, and we'll have, make all of our adjustments in the budget to meet that. We're finalizing our staffing budget. We'll have a, finalize our community service-funded initiatives area. We're, we're having budget department meetings, budget meetings with our departments and school budget reviews the next week or two. We have quite a bit of construction planning to do, including how we're going to do the Aquatic Center project, and then, so we still have a lot of work to do over the next several weeks to get it finalized for approval next month. So that kind of concludes the budget part of it, and there's two other parts of the budget hearing that I'm supposed to go over, so I, I don't know if you want to ask, or is there any other comments on the budget you?
Dr. Frontier.
Can you comment briefly on the referendum money and the status of the buckets, the three buckets related to monies we allocated from the referendum? How much of that is left or?
So we have about, I don't know, a little under $2 million a year available of referendum funds. The bulk of that eight and a half million is going towards debt service for the construction we've done previously. And some of that 2 million, does that include the amount for referendum, for our security? So some of that 2 million includes the technology and safety allocation as well. So, and, and in addition to that, we do have some district funding of about $1.6 million that we've set aside as well, so that, on top of the referendum funds, so, so it's.
There's still money in some of the, in those three buckets?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Heckan-Lively, did you have a?
No.
Anyone else? All right, why don't you proceed to the other items?
Okay, then, the next category of the public hearing is we're supposed to discuss the Employee Benefit Trust Fund. It's the, this is the trust fund that's set up to help with retiree, retirement, or employee, former employee retirement benefit costs. So this is the, the budget for it, and this includes basically the fund balance of $10 million. We, we've been setting aside, as per a DPI guidance, money every year to help cover future benefit costs of employees. So we've been setting aside that. Fund balance is getting up to about $10 million, and to, and at some point, hopefully, we have enough to help sustain retiree benefit costs. So that's, that's, that's our current structure of it. We do have investments through a company that has assisted us with investments. This shows that we had dispersed about $4 million, but the amount in the trust was 5 million. So that is the number as of June 30th, but DPI has us replenish the trust fund as of July, so it goes back up to 10 million in July. So it's one of those timing things where this is, this is how much is in the trust, but we still have funds that we still transferred to the fund in July. Some of the investments, you can see these are specific areas. We have our advisors assist us in purchasing investments to help us get a return on that amount. These are some of the categories, and it's all done in increments of $250,000, so it's collateralized, so that we make sure that they're insured and we don't lose those funds in case of a situation. And we do do some investments that are longer term. You can see some of them, it's about, there's one that'll be due next year for about $1.2 million, another in a couple of years, another 1.2. So we do some longer-term investments to get a better rate of return for that fund, and about 60, this says about 64, 65% are in CDs, but we do, we do invest these in a conservative way to make sure that these funds are, and we do invest in a way that meets state law to protect those funds as part of the trust. Any questions on the OPEB trust?
Mark, just for clarification, the teacher pensions are handled in another way. This is really just the benefits, largely health insurance?
Correct, correct. So the state retirement system, we contribute to teachers, the teacher pension, and all employees to the state, they handle all those retirement benefits in a different, completely different way. These are district-funded health benefits until 65, so there's a, a benefit for employees to get health coverage to 65, and this is setting aside funds for that purpose.
Any other questions? All right, one more.
So the other area of the required public hearing is an energy efficiency report. So we have two different companies that we've utilized for energy efficiency projects. We have had up to four phases of energy efficiency projects. The first one, I have all the schools listed, phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four. This is the train performance contract. So I think the total, we've had significant savings from each of the phases, they, they have it accumulated. So the phase one has already generated almost $1 million in savings. Phase two is about $164,000 in savings. Phase three is a little bit less. It was only one school, Gerstad Eggerhoms School. And then phase four, we haven't started in the verification process yet for the savings as the project was finished recently. So it is, it has been a way of keeping our utility budget fairly stable instead of increasing, so that has, we have, we have recognized savings from implementing these and utilizing this, this allowance, energy efficiency allowance under state law. The other company we use was Johnson Controls. They had phase one, two, and four, so they, they, the first phase saved almost $700,000 to date, and phase two was a lot of work at some of our high schools, that's about $100,000. And then the phase four, we're still, we just finished installation during the last year, we're expected to save about $63,000 a year. That was at the Community Pathways Building, so.
Quick question, is this still available for us from the state? I think Governor Walker took it away, is it, is it back?
Yeah, there was a, that was rescinded, that has, there's a, was it a 1,000-year ban on doing this? They did an interesting veto, 999 years prohibition on it. So, so that is no longer provided to us, but we still report out on what we did before. And so a lot of these savings we utilize to, the savings are used to reduce the tax levy impact of the debt service that we had to implement these procedures, so. So that's about it.
All right. Well, that brings us to the actual public hearing, the opportunity for the public to speak on the proposed budget. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this proposed budget? Anyone who wishes to speak on the proposed budget? Anyone who wishes to speak on the proposed budget? Hearing no one, the public hearing is closed. That completes our business for this phase of the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Heckan-Lively, Ms. Barbian. Mr. Heckan-Lively, Ms. Barbian, all those in favor say aye.
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 We are adjourned, and we move into an executive session meeting in the Franklin Room, I expect.